This meeting is called to order in accordance to the Open Public Meeting Act. Notice of this meeting was provided to the home news Tribune, the Star Letter, and the Highland Park Planet on April eighteenth, two thousand twenty-four, and was posted on Borough Hall website at www.hbborough.com and on the bulletin board of Borough Hall, two twenty-one South Fifth Avenue, Highland Cart, New Jersey, and has remained continuously posted as required by law. Fire exits are to my left and right of council chambers. While you're standing, Phil, can you leave us in the pleasure?
Everyone stand please.
That's what you get.
Enter my pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That was good. I couldn't resist it. Hold call.
Mayor Foster.
Here.
Councilwoman Canavera. Councilman George.
Here.
Councilman Hale.
Here.
Council President Hirsch.
Here.
Councilwoman Kim Chong.
Here.
Councilman Postel. I'm sorry, Postelik.
Here.
Borough Attorney Shaw.
Here.
Borough Administrator Hobart.
Here.
Borough Planner Christopher Costin.
Here.
This is a work session, so no formal action will be taken on this section. Discussion will be on Track C redevelopment and the public meeting, which will be held on Wednesday, June fifth, at seven P. M. at the high school. And also on eight-ten North Second Avenue redevelopment plan, Upper Raritan redevelopment plan presentation, presentations on both, Upper Raritan road diet proposed alternatives. So we'll start off with Track C.
All right.
I think the hot seat belongs to Karen.
All right, on this one, I will take it. So everybody should have on their calendar Wednesday, June fifth, seven to nine P. M. at the high school cafeteria. We're going to have our open community meeting to discuss the plans for Track C. We are using, just to kind of give an overview, kind of the vision for it will be a kind of orientation presentation. Mayor Foster will kick things off. Councilmember Hale will go after, kind of give a little more orientation to how we got to this point. Then I'll go in with some overview about process in terms of what we've taken to get to this point. And then we'll hand it over to Garden Homes, but Chansman and probably his colleague Abalino Martinez, his architect, to give an overview of the concept design for the site. Well, then, at that point, break for, and we'll have set up in the room three information stations. So the idea is to have an opportunity for people to get up close to the different aspects of the project, ask their questions, give us feedback. Some of it will be, you know, sticky dots on a board in terms of what kind of images do you like, don't like. Other things will be, so the three workstations that we've envisioned, one will be a concept plan station where Garden Homes will be there to kind of go again in more detail over the plans. You can get up close and get a better handle on how the site works. We'll have some renderings available and copies for people to look at. We'll have, I should have back up, we would like to have some members of council at each station. So we'll talk about assignments at another time, but certainly our members of the Economic Development Committee had offered to fill in at each of these stations, mostly to give feedback, not feedback, give dialogue back and forth, listen to what people have to say. Here are the questions. If you know the answer, great. If not, write it down and we'll get them an answer to that question. So back to where I was, concept plan station, Garden Homes in Blackbird. That's the architect likely be kind of the primaries on that deck. We're going to have a community spaces station because there's a lot of community space, as you're aware, both in the project but also adjacent to our plans on South Third Third. So we're going to have some material to speak to that and try to answer as much, take some feedback on that. And then a station on parking, because we know that's kind of an issue that folks are going to have questions about. We can present material from our parking plan and have some numbers ready and kind of walk through some of our phasing ideas about during construction because we will be building on our community parking lot to make this project happen. So we've some ideas about how we're going to manage that. So those are the three main areas that we were hoping folks would break out into to talk to. We might also have the PowerPoint just kind of slowly rotating on the front screen throughout the whole evening so that if you came in late and wanted to see what was presented, you know, you'll have a chance to just kind of sit there and go through those slides as well. So we use that format successfully at a couple meetings. And that's, so we're just trying to reproduce that success with this project. I think, you know, the big thing will be getting the word out. And so we're working really hard to make sure it's on everybody's radar to come out. Because, you know, it's a busy time. We were just discussing all the events on everybody's calendar. So Wednesday, June fifth, we wanted to get this in before people are running off for summer vacation and other, you know, fun things. So I don't know any other mayor or Matt. That's pretty much what we discussed, right?
Yeah.
Matt?
The only thing I would just point out is Carrie said out that that two thirty-two Raritan burn building is about to be demolished in the next couple of days. That does not mean the Track C starts two days later. So the fact that we're demolishing that doesn't necessarily mean that, you know, it just needs to be demolished. It's a burned building, right?
Can you speak to why it's being demolished?
It's a burned, it's the burned building, right? Remember, it's the one that had the fire. And so, so I just.
It's just kind of worked out. It was going to be the same week, so don't read into it.
Right. Nothing to read into, you know, about that. And then I guess the other thing I would just point out is that, that in addition to this, right, there are still meetings that are going to happen at the council. There's still meetings that are going to happen at the planning board. There's still meetings that, you know, so there's a number of different places where people will be able to talk and speak and, and say what they want. So this is, I don't want people to think that this is like the one bite at the apple that they get. This is just, you know, where we introduce this, we have conversations, and then, you know, as we go through the formal process, you know, there'll be, there'll be a lot more opportunity for people to chime in.
Yeah, to build on that, I would just, I'll be presenting on this, so I may as well mention here too, is that there will be, we know we need to amend the plan just by virtue of the fact that there are additional lots being considered for development that weren't in our original plan. And there are likely going to be some other tweaks we need to make based on the concept they present, as well as the feedback we get back, you know, as we mull through it. So that alone will require two meetings of council, a planning board visit, let alone, once they have a project, there's going to be a redevelopment agreement before they can go to the planning board. Again, there'll be a public meeting where we can discuss those terms and so forth. And then certainly they have a concept plan and they have a, finally, they have a site plan that they're ready to go before the planning board with. There'll be all of that as well. So we're at the, finally, we have something to show. Question for it.
In them.
Feedback.
We'll have that session available shortly.
Sure, I go back to that.
Just stick a pin. Any, anything else that we need to share, Terry?
That's all I have prepared to mention tonight.
Councilmembers, do you have questions? And your economic development team is ready to answer questions and
We've talked through it.
books and stickies and everything else.
We'll have, we'll have all the supplies there. Don't worry about that.
We went through and did everything at economic development, so I think the team's ready.
Yeah, and it's really facilitational for all members of the council, I think, you know, just helping solicit the input.
It's our big moment. We've been promising this one for a long time.
All right.
Real quick, so we're not going to, because most of it is like, I guess, one-on-one conversations, so we're not going to record.
We're going to record the presentation.
Presentation part.
And we'll make that available, but it's impossible to kind of.
To be a demonstration.
Yeah, it's going to be rolling, so it's kind of a set presentation and then more of an open house format here.
That's why we really want people to come out in person and see the project and, you know, have discussion around it, make notes and give us feedback and everything else like that.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. All right, so we're good on that one. Next, next one, we're going to go to eight-ten North Second Avenue redevelopment plan presentation.
And I'm going to share my screen so that people at home and, sorry, councilmembers, somebody will have to tilt. So that Chris can kind of toggle through his slides.
You have a key.
All right, you just go.
So I have a short presentation on the two redevelopment plans that we have in draft format, obviously for both plans. So the opportunity to introduce the plan that will be reviewed by the planning board for consistency review and then back to council for adoption. So this is sort of a preview at high level what the plans are that you have before you. Are these on the websites?
I was going to make, not yet, because there's still a kind of pipe for draft stage, but when it gets suddenly, as part of introduction, will be available.
Okay, so I'll start with eight-ten North Second Avenue. This is a very, very small site out in the northwest corner of the municipality. It is an area that's sort of bounded by a single-family residential neighborhood, fronting on Cleveland Avenue with the crossings behind it. It's actually one of the last, in this particular area, that the last remaining light industrial use, south side of Cleveland Avenue. It's like, what do we do with it? The property contains a one and two-story built, well, it's one building containing a one-story portion fronting right on the street, a two-story portion behind it. It's been used, it's built in nineteen forty, used as a laboratory commercial use, vacant for at least last year or so. So the property, I think there was some interest as to what can we do with this. And this is actually a neat exercise on my part to prepare a sort of slim version of a redevelopment plan. That way we can be nimble, sort of react to and be proactive as well to really provide something that could be beneficial for really, really small sites or small developers, not just the big ones. So this is a great opportunity to really test that process in a cohesive and efficient manner. In terms of the vision, the idea is that, again, obviously, this is pretty simple, just a very, very, very seismic implementation plan. The key here is a potential adaptive reuse of the legacy of light industrial use. Again, it's one of the last uses of a light industrial, non-residential nature in this part of the neighborhood. The key here, one thing we want to promote, is sustainability reuse. Really kind of create the missing middle housing type that's sort of missing in this neighborhood. After all, you do have single-family homes that, for a long time, have been built on Cleveland Avenue. Newer homes also built on the other side, at least wayside, as well as townhomes, but not small apartments or what have you. So this is sort of a missing niche of housing type, small, small units, likely mostly one bedrooms. There's hardly not going to be any twos, I don't think, because of the size of the building. So it's really kind of coning in on a missing type of housing in this particular neighborhood, which is good. Obviously, I think it goes unsaid. This redevelopment plans is good because you can't do it under current zoning because you have the opportunity to do something neat, but you can't do it with zoning. So this redevelopment plan sort of, sort of fixes that with the site specific plan. And master plan, it did talk about sort of improving the mix of uses in the neighborhood, including a common, a wider range of uses, and so on and so forth. Since it's a very small site, really straightforward, considering taking the light industrial use, which has been vacant for about a year or so. Here, what we're contemplating is multifamily apartments within the existing structure. They may be in addition, but only at the second level on the front part. There's really not much more we're going to do that because what we're trying to do is sort of right-size apartment apartments, one per unit. Is that what we're looking at? That means, within that masting, you can only fit only a handful of units. That's fine. I think that's what we're looking for here. The bulk regulations really are setting the tone of maintaining the existing building, but there are certain features of the site, as saw in photos in the plan, that there's sort of add-on building right on top of your property. I'm trying to get rid of that. There's parking leading into the neighbor's property, single-family house, trying to pull that back a little bit. So sort of right sizing and fixing things have been, conditions have been exist for a long time. Improving buffer, improving frontage, including getting rid of shrubs, it's kind of blocking sidewalk, and so on and so forth. If, for some reason, a project's not feasible, we did put into the plan sort of a backup option, and that is you can do a house with an E D U. We did talk about that during the master plan process in two thousand nineteen. This might be a neat test case in case the apartments don't work out. So single-family and E D U perhaps, or two-family. So we're trying to just be mindful and be proactive just in case the.
Explain E D U. And what is E D U?
Oh, sorry, accessory dwelling unit. So basically, a small dwelling unit, small tiny house on a property which could be attached, detached, or what have you, some sort of form, also on the property with a single-family home.
Before you flip, and I apologize if you said it, but I think you may have skipped over. We are requiring an affordable unit.
That's why I wanted, what's meant to explain what.
But not, not, that's not the accessory dwelling. That if, if the adaptive reuse would take place, there'd be at least probably, based on the number of apartments, it could yield up one unit of affordability there.
So roughly, it's five units.
Either five or six.
Four and six units, so no matter what, we're going to require one or four.
One is important. Yeah, we don't have portion, partial affordable.
Also one bike per unit, so all those things that sort of advocate for use parking. So before I move on to Upper Raritan, any questions on this one? Straight forward, reuse of the existing building.
Everybody know where their property is?
Yeah, I just. Moving. But I, yeah, I think.
Jason, you know where the property is?
Exactly.
Okay.
We had visited it last year.
Yeah, okay.
So that generally makes, I mean, that's pretty consistent with what we had contemplated. So, you know, Chris mentioned the streamlined plan that he came up with for this. I think it will serve us well if we need that kind of precision in the future.
All right, next one is Upper Raritan.
Yeah.
Plan development.
Sure, Upper Raritan's actually been a discussion point for quite some time. We renew a contract to keep this going.
Yeah.
So for this particular project, this is in the northeast part of town on Upper Raritan, Route twenty-seven. The redevelopment area that was selected is under rehab designation. So the area that we select is actually bounded by three streets, the really the frontages of the Raritan Avenue between Maryland South Eleventh and South Ten. It's Jiffy. Yeah, so the South Ten. Right.
Of course, we don't.
So the corner of South Ten and Raritan Avenue is the Lube It All property. I'm not sure there's a use in there.
There's someone renting, but I did confirm with the landlord or the property owner's representation that it's an interim use. They fully intend to move for this.
Yeah, so I think that particular property source, I think, was impetus of looking at this plan. So, but really think about holistically, we look at the entire block base because the other property on South Eleventh, Maryland, fronting on the twenty-seventh upper part of the plan, north, that was also considered for some development. So we took the opportunity, let's put them all into a plan, recognizing that there's several other properties really not interested at this time or really processed yet per se with development. So try to be a build flexibility with some, in case something wasn't happening. But yes, that sort of impetus of this project was, what do we do with Lube It All? Also on that property is apparently what looks like a house, but has five units in it. It's quite undersized, not really accessible. I think the approach here is that that will be demolished, but the units might be folded into a new project. So in terms of existing conditions, so some photos are in the plan, it's really illustrating the existing conditions. We got the Lube It All tops left, you got the, I think, the former, or it might be, I'm sorry, the still active veterinary place, apartment building, corner, the first building, especially nicely maintained, as well as a brick office building and some vacant land. There's some topography issues, meaning slopes quite a bit, about eight or ten feet on by Maryland. So there might be some challenges with the construction. Hey, Chris, the, the.
Just go ahead one second.
The top left corner was a brick building in the back to the right of Lube It All. That's also. Yeah, that particular.
That's that house.
That's the house, the house that's, that's the five units in it, that's on the property. It's not an additional property, it's on the same property as. Oh, wow.
Yeah, it's, I guess, it's a non-conforming condition.
It's just a weird looking thing because you would think it's a separate thing when you go up.
Yeah, I know. It's, it's on the same lot.
Same lot, yes. Speaking of which, the.
The apartment building next to it.
It's on the lot, it's on Jiffy Lube. Why am I saying Jiffy Lube now? Lube It All, huh?
Yeah, that's on the same block as Lube It All, it's on opposite side on South Eleven. That apartment building, that also is a non-conforming use, right? We're dealing with a lot of non-conforming conditions here, especially.
We're old.
Lube It All.
Our town is old.
Front, not good for its streetscape.
Yeah, to be clear, this is the commercial zone, the underlying zoning in this area is commercial, which wouldn't allow for an apartment building, wouldn't allow for retail with apartments on top by, by right. So again, doing stuff that we can't currently deal with, that existing zone. Sorry, I just took your thunder.
That's fine. Really leads into that is that we're trying to think about what go beyond the sea commercials, I mean, that's allowed for a mix of uses with housing and commercial space. As of right now, you can't have housing, even though if you look, go drive down Raritan Avenue, there's lots of houses, but they're all non-conforming. And recognizing, really responding to the market, the ground floor of a new building anywhere in this area doesn't all have to be commercial because that's going to probably take away from the core downtown. You don't want to stretch the commercial activity too far. So we have to kind of sort of right-size in response to the market. That's why we want to allow for flex space, including housing on the ground floor. And if there is a residential use in Grand Florida, just make sure it's interesting and activated, like a gym or a workspace, something that feels like it's active, not just an empty space. So emphasis here is, in addition to sustainability, of course, but here is primarily on rockability and bicycle parking, which will lead into the road diet discussion later. Again, the current zoning does not permit for mix of uses, trying to fix that and create that missing middle housing that's missing. That's why it's called missing. In terms of the master plan, achieves many, many, many strategies of the Upper Raritan and the Landry's plan adopted in two thousand nineteen, primarily to really transform Upper Raritan from a single-story strip, which we do have here at one of the sites, it's the Lube It All property, into multifamily uses. So this is a graphic from the, sorry, the master plan adopted in two thousand.
Can you make it a little bit bigger?
Sure. I know, you wish. You're going to have that here, come on. He was trying to make it bigger with his hand.
Yeah, I don't have.
Touch screen. We're not there fancy.
There we go.
So this is a strategy page, I should say, this is an existing conditions map in the master plan on the website. So this is one of the areas of focus. We had five focused areas in the master plan. So Upper Raritan, obviously, is one of them, Cleveland Avenue was another. So Upper Raritan, we looked at several sites. We noticed a pattern of low-scale parking in front conditions, lack of street trees, street furniture, really lacking that street connectivity. What was neat here is five years ago, we were looking at the site, this is labeled D. We saw the jewelers are behind us on the left, we're looking across the street at Lube It All. So we're like, yeah, this is a great site to do development here, wouldn't it be? And that's, will be a segue into my next slide. So this is the existing conditions. This is, the photo's five years old, so I'll give you that, but it's.
Nothing has changed. Don't worry.
I was going to say.
Nothing has changed.
Or a little shower on the street does not look safe.
I just got an email that they're all worn out already, so we need to.
They weren't, they weren't safe in the first place.
Right, so this is a bad picture because this makes it look great. So the condition here, this is a little sketch video, some members of the master plan subcommittee and members of the public sort of took part in sketching what it could be. What's remarkable is that the concept plan, we do have a developer that's interested in doing something at Lube It All, and they have a concept plan that's actually quite similar to this. I'm not saying they took our plan and did this, but they did the right thing and put in a building up front, closed the curb cuts, parking behind the building, sort of really stitching.
Safe.
Upper Raritan back together.
They had come to screening, rehab, redevelopment screening, and got that feedback. So I think that's why their project, but their project's not allowed.
Yeah. Stay tuned, sweet. And of course, we have the bike lane, kind of interesting.
So this was just a visualization from the Landry's element?
And the road diet is in play.
And drawn, I think, how the year actually practice meetings. It was a fun exercise we did with the public. So the plan requirements, we are allowing for multifamily apartments, a range of commercial space, but they're hopefully trying to work with the developer to review on the agreement is you don't have to have the entire first floor commercial. It's a given in flexibility. Ideally, we have a small commercial corner, kind of framed corner of South Ten and Raritan. The bulk regulation, regulations are right-sized in terms of setbacks, meaning instead of a lot requiring a deep setback, we're also having what's called bill-to-lines. It's a form-based code type of strategy where you make sure the building's not set too far back because you're trying to get rid of the parking lot in front. There's plenty of space in the back of these lots. And we did, did put in the plan, where it's appropriate, you have four-story pop-ups to let people get onto the roof, maybe have a roof deck, trying to get flexibility and interest, which add value to the project. But not a full four-story. We don't think four stories is appropriate here yet. We're not sure. This is for a test case, in a way, with Upper Raritan. In terms of standards, instead of one per, space per unit, since we're not quite close to a downtown area in terms of a train station, we're thinking one and a half spaces per unit, so I still want bike per unit, parking in the rear, improving the buffering. One of the things we talked about in the master plan for this area, it really applies to all commercial areas, is improve the transition between the commercial property front on the main streets to the residential neighbors behind it. That goes beyond just a five-foot buffer, also screening, increasing five feet to ten feet, more landscaping, more, trying to serve, really better manage the transition from a three-story mixed to a house next to it. Sounds scary, but you can manage it with the appropriate standards, which we use all the time in our field on all or in many communities. Public benefits, this will actually lead into the next discussion for Terry's going to have, is want to eliminate the curb cuts. Obviously, with the Lube It All property, it's just two driveways. The idea is close them all, you get access on the side streets, on the park, benefits having a very well-laid out grid, and that allows, gives us opportunities to have parking in the back. Really use the opportunity to improve the streetscape, the street trees, benches, planting strips, and really supplement support the intended vision of the Upper Raritan road diet. So this will be a neat test case for what the vision laid out in the master plan in two thousand nineteen. I'm looking forward to working with the developer on one of the sites.
Yes, just want to clarify one point. If there's a property in our plan that isn't interested in it right now, what, how do we handle that?
So the plan is my last slide, I'm sorry. So first I'll start with this, then I'll answer your question. So the idea here in the plan is that, as we talked about, build two lines, minimal setbacks to get the buildings closer to the street. What you see on, in yellow are the permitted building footprints, trying to force the building closer to the street with a modest setback of five or ten feet. And then parking is forced in the back. In terms of other properties, they can utilize the existing zoning as it is today. So for example, this particular property here is a single-family home. While it is in a redevelopment plan, they do not have to participate. In fact, I'm sorry.
Can you guys zoom that in?
Sure. Just, it's a little gray outside.
It actually faces eleven.
It faces.
Oh, okay.
So that's lot seven.
It's kind of the backyard to the, the property that faces.
Yeah, this is a standalone, last, single-family property, property owner. So they don't have to participate. In fact, we wrote in the plan that whatever happens here, if something were to happen, have to have a twenty-foot setback from that particular property. So we're keeping in mind people who do not want to participate into this plan. And this plan, I don't think will require future amendments to try to build flexibilities that way. Something does happen after Lube It All, they come right to the redevelopment entity or to be done right there and just enter into an agreement and.
Because they'll be done already.
And so it's already there in cases there, so sort of build, building the framework for future development. You notice certain parts of this area, mainly the Lube It All property, is sort of ready for prime time soon than obviously other properties. And just to be clear, if they do want to join later on, they have capacity to do that as well, right? Yes, of course.
Or if somebody decides to negotiate, they want to do a bigger project and use, you know, and they can negotiate a sale of that property, you never know what people are. So it's, it adds options as I look at it.
Yeah, I, I see this plan as serving two purposes. One is to facilitate something that we want, working with a conditional redevelopment now, but also lay the framework for others to participate in the future without them to keep amending and amending and amending.
People that already live in the apartments get first dibs at the new apartments?
So that's the discussion we have to have in the redevelopment agreement. That's a sort of work relocation plan. That's something that, that's something we had concern with early in the process, assuming they're all occupied. So that's a, to be determined.
On Maryland Eleventh, they decorate for every holiday, like they're invested in the community.
Agreed.
So yeah, that's something we, we talked about and need some advice from Joe Baumann's team of how we would build that kind of protection here, to the extent that we can, we will.
I might have trouble with affordable, if there's an affordable component, with having a residential preference. Is that, is that, it was like a resident, like an intent preference, yeah. There's some cool, no, I, I know some cool efforts that have done that, but.
But we'll have to, you know, I'm sure there's a, it's not a huge project, so I don't know if there's a spot for everybody.
Yeah, I don't know about all the residents, but I know there is one that, like I said, they decorate all the time, like you can tell they're invested in.
Yeah.
In the community, in their home, right?
At their property. Yes, they have tenants in there, so what are the rights of. Yes, they are tenants in there, so what are the rents of the tenants if?
If something was to develop, although it's.
We're just talking about the.
My, my memory is that uh when they went to the screening committee, they only had two of the five rented. That was years ago.
That's a while, who knows what it is now.
But I, I remember them saying at the screening committee that they were struggling to find people to, to rent, which was one of the reasons they wanted to move ahead. So I, that totally could not be the case now, but it was when we went to the screen.
Yeah, that was over five years ago.
Yes, and in terms of affordability, obviously, the five units there are not designated affordable, but they're probably inherently affordable despite depending on what their actual rents are. This project specifically with regards to Louboutin will have obviously an affordable housing requirement. So the, the question I think we're trying to resolve is, can they get first dibs? Certainly look into that for sure.
No, I have a just quick question about bike uh bike standards, um just because of where it is. I mean, is that something that we wanna think about? Kind of advocating for higher bike standards, just because it's in town and wanna encourage cycling, you know, if we're gonna have.
More than one per unit, you mean?
Well, how does that work? So maybe bike parking for you, right? It would so be.
So how we structured the plan is, and it's become more of a place, if you read it, it looks special because I think hopefully you've gotten used to it. Uh but it is one per unit, sets you pretty aggressive. Some communities go crazy. Um so I'll do one per unit and it could be achieved in a number of ways. One is a bike hook in the room, a bike, bike room that's shared with the residents, uh a bike rack outside. I think the plan, I, I don't remember, I don't know how to memorize, but the plan should call for at least one outdoor bike rack to let guests. Uh the idea is have some sort of weather protected element inside, which could be a room or a hooks inside.
And if we're negotiating a, a agreement and we think it's important that it all be internal or whatever, that's something we could just stipulate as part of our agreement, is that while the plan says this, we want you to go. You know, that's the minimum.
Want an extra?
Yeah.
Yeah, I believe when we looked at the concept plans with the site, uh it did include a bike room.
Yeah.
Perhaps it needs to be a little bit bigger and more glass, but that it, they're definitely in for.
I mean, to the extent it's, it's locked and protected, I think it's just encourages a better use of it than if, yeah, you know, putting it outside.
I had a A T B stolen from a bike lockup room at an apartment in the Midlands.
You still gotta lock it up, in the lockup room. So there's different ways you can achieve it, and then you can also, some of the units maybe soon if they have a long entry, you could kind of put a hook. You know, there's, there's more than one way to, and not everybody wants it in their living room versus some people think it's cool, so.
I feel had a question.
Yeah, just briefly, I just following up on one comment that you made, I think it's important. Uh with regard to the commercial, it's limiting it, um especially in this location, which is out of town, you made an interesting comment that I noted, which was putting in the commercial, which could potentially um compete with the downtown.
Right.
Um it's, it seems to me that when we're beginning, and I think it's a great start to start developing upper Raritan. To help with join the town, um it, it is to say, we really don't need the commercial in the area. We need more apartments. We need more people, more residents who are going to facilitate the downtown, because we still have some problems downtown on occasion. You know, we have some people here, here, here today and gone tomorrow. We have landlords who are charging very high rents. Um and so maybe a consideration to say, um we may be better off with more, more units, more affordable in that.
Sorry. No, go ahead, continue.
Uh one of the things that we talked about um throughout this is to try and be as flexible as possible on the bottom floor. So rather than have commercial all the way across the bottom, there could be residential across the bottom, could be, you know, um there could be a psychologist office across the bottom or, you know, or or something along those lines. So I think the way that the plan is, is written is to try and say some commercial, but not exclusively commercial and a lot of different sort of flexible potential uses down there.
Okay, I mean, as lo- as long as it, as long as we're not locked into a, you know, a plan that mandates that.
I, I do not either wanna see a plan that mandates all commercial on the bottom, but we have to think when we're looking at this project. It can't be all affordable because it seem like we're siloing a certain set of people into this area. Or all of Highland Park needs to have fair access to not only housing, but equal housing stock. So I, I'm a hundred percent for affordable units, but I just don't wanna see where it's gonna be all affordable unit in one section. That the quality of housing and the standards of housing should be the same across the board. So as we look at track C that we're gonna look at real soon, I wanna see the same standard of uh living and the same standard of unit be considered in here. And Raritan, as we move to see track C develop, we are gonna see more people coming into town and more businesses, businesses being utilized. So we, it may be an opportunity for some mixed use in here as well.
Yeah, I, I agree. We can't have affordable housing, we can't do that.
No.
Kind of related to what you just said, um what I thought, I, I guess the way I was gonna approach it is if they come to us and they have a commercial tenant that they wanna build for, that'd be one thing versus speculating, building like a, a restaurant envelope with no restaurant, with no nothing. And that's something we can take into consideration as we negotiate the plan and the agreement. Is if, if they've come to us with, we've got somebody who wants to open up this here, that might change our feeling about commercial on the first floor versus, you know, it's a speculation and we're just sitting there with an empty retail spot, you know, which is not good for anybody.
That's been a challenge for many mixed use buildings throughout the country is it's required ground for commercial, it's empty while apartments are already built up. Uh just kind of tie up that loose end.
Just one second before you do, Jason?
Oh, I just wanted to chime in to say like, I fully support the flexibility of commercial property. Just one thing I guess to keep in mind is that a lot of the properties in the downtown kind of like we're in this pushout animal, where it's like an old single family home with like a little box out there. So having the flexibility for this commercial space like might attract someone who may not come because we don't have quite the right size of property, that gives them some flexible option. But you know, I totally hear you, so I agree, like, we may not get there, so they may not show up with a, with a tenant, that's a, a commercial tenant that's interested in that. And I'm perfectly open to, to that's always eventual as well.
So I mean, I, I think we did like the idea, at least the planning nerds on the group, of having the corner as you're heading toward kind of the closest corner as you're heading out of town toward Edison, having a commercial use there if it's feasible, if they can, because we thought that would be a good look nice, it would be a good corner for business, like it would set them up well. Um so we think there's, we just don't think it needs to be the entire frontage. Yeah, so I think there's a potential, and they seem to think there was some potential.
A nice Starbucks.
Yeah, well.
I'm just kidding, but it's something nice. Are we? Make it she she on the corner, you know, instead of. But I digress.
Yeah, so parking is gonna constrain, you know, but we did figure out that commercial and the building, it was feasible to have enough parking to support it.
Uh Chris, you were about to say something.
I was, I was just gonna mention that, I think everything we discuss more or less is handled in the redevelopment plan. It, in the current draft. A variety of commercial uses, which actually copied over from downtown for the expanding its types of uses, being a little bit more flexible. Is permitted but not required. And residential is permitted on ground floor, so I think anything that we talk about trying to respond to the market flexibility, it's already in the plan. And I think it's our approach for anything really going forward. Um trying to really be responsible with when we do these.
Just the total number of units again is, what are we thinking, total number of units?
For Louboutin? Uh for Louboutin, I think it was around fifteen, between fifteen and twenty.
Different scale, it's, you know, we're trying something a little different.
And they agree in concept of the affordable housing requirements, but there will be threes.
So we obviously have to still get through our negotiations.
And you said one variable?
Oh no, that was uh North Second. Just because of the, the nature. Carve it up too many different ways.
Yeah, but this, this one was.
It's cool.
It's, I, I think, I mean, I think this is the, the approach that we need to be taking, not a monolithic, single effort, but you know, creative and flexible and smaller scale, I think it's really spot on, so.
And it wouldn't be nice to see some reinvestment in that.
Absolutely, absolutely. Hopefully this is a start of men.
Uh every time I drive by Louboutin, I'm like, such a nice one.
I've been in town thirty years and since I've been in town, before I came to town, that has been vacant. It's been a.
It wasn't a Louboutin?
No, it's just been just.
I just assume I just missed it.
No, I didn't know, I didn't miss anything and it's just like been there like.
It was a million different.
Well attended.
Or change your oil station. They just changed the name, they'd opened.
People just like open the, they do it, but it's just been crappy for thirty, thirty plus years.
Yeah, it's been on its way down for a long.
Is the property clean because of the nature of the businesses that's been there?
I don't know that it was ever a um repair, other than the Louboutin. I don't know about the, you know, due diligence that the uh property owner has done. Did we talk about that with them? But they'd certainly be required to.
I thought there was one oil change pit, which is sometimes.
Might have been, but my recollection.
Uh it's not related to the Louboutin?
No. So it didn't come up on our search, but um cer- certainly we would make sure to, I believe they purchased this property not long ago and so they should have their due diligence done already.
It's one of the first things we recommend, it's like before we talk.
Yes.
How bad is it?
Sorry, I forgot, the one on second, is that also been tested because?
They've done actually a phase one and a phase two. I read, the question came up in a council meeting and I did raise it with them and they, they invested in the extras, that they didn't have to do the secondary, I think they decided for their own. Personal benefit. We shut that down.
Okay, yeah.
So you never know what they'll say down the line, but for now, they don't.
And this is someone locally that reached out to us.
Oh, okay, cause I can imagine as what's there now and what's gonna be on there, like, you know.
Hopefully they've got a good business plan.
Any other questions? Be- before we um move to public discussion, we're gonna move to the road diet proposal.
So I have an update and then I have a few slides I can share with you, but to update uh you. We had a meeting a couple of weeks ago, myself, the chief, Lieutenant Soden, Bruce Koch, our borough engineer. Uh with the kind of project team, which includes DOT staff members and their consultant group, I think, and Kenneth Fleming is the name for their uh consultant, to give us kind of an update, where is this project? And basically, I wanna start off by saying, I know it feels like forever.
It is forever.
Uh but we're really just at the kind of there's, let's say, three phases, and I have a slide, I'll show you, that shows you this, three phases, we're kind of at the end of the first phase, so we're not even at halfway point. So keep that in mind with everything I'm about to say and show that there's still a lot of work to be done. We're basically in concept plant phase, and then there's engineering that actually happens. So engineering, engineering hasn't happened, but what they have done, and I'll show you some of the slides that they, I'm gonna flip through, cause there's a lot of backstory and I think this group at least is pretty familiar. I did confirm I can make the slides available, so I will do that as soon as I can find some time to update the website, but um essentially, they had the public information uh center, which is what DOT calls an online public meeting of sorts. We're doing a public information center for safe routes, so at least they're consistent. I think it has something to do with federal money too. But in any case, the um uh presented a concept to our community, they got some feedback from it. Apprehension to like it, you know, it was all over the map, but I would say that probably the overwhelming, based on what they told me, I didn't read every comment. Uh with a sense of frustration on how slowly everything's going and how long is this going to take? So I just don't wanna, don't shoot the messenger here when you see the slide about where we are in the process, but give me one second, I wanna pull up the slide. So I'm gonna walk you through what they showed us, what the preferred alternative is, which really hasn't changed from the concept plan that was presented um at the public information center. Uh nobody's welcome to. Because yes, like. You know, we kind of need to start, you know, if this is gonna happen, anticipating that in our, our development plan. So um so they, they um, let me just, I can't talk and click on slides at the same time.
Oh, so that bike lane, he showed wasn't reality.
No, it's just a concept.
No, that was a vision of a, you know.
But no, it's not reality, it's just a vision.
Oh, I remember what I was gonna say when I derailed myself. Uh but essentially there's not a, a huge change in the concept, because the concept isn't that hard. It's elimination of a lane of traffic in either direction, um starting at, well, initially the project area was eighth to the Edison border, North Eighth Edison border. However, after going through this process, they're recommending starting the process, starting the project area at six, because it doesn't make sense to have two blocks that are out, which seems like an obvious thing. And so that, they addressed that right away, but there'll be a slide, I get to it. Um but what they have done is done, done some number crunching on level of service, times, things like that, and I left, they feel confident that this project can work. However, they want the council to pass a resolution of support for the concept plan before going into the next phase of engineering. So that was the big ask at that meeting. Um and so I'm gonna share with you now, gonna kind of flip through um. Again, they're not my slides, so I'll do my best. Cover my butt, cover my butt. Did you hear my covering my butt there? Okay. All right, let's see here, if I can find my screen. Alrighty.
And you guys got a copy of that in your?
Uh so yes, and like I said, I confirm with DOT that, I mean, as long as everybody knows, this is just where we are right now. It's a moment in time. So you can see this was our local officials briefing. Um so this is the stretch that is being looked at. You can see the initial project location began at mile post seventeen fifty eight, otherwise known as North Eighth. Uh up to the border there with Edison and at mile post eighteen oh four. By the middle of the meeting, they said there's, their, their recommendation is to start at six, so that they can transition appropriately, as appropriately as possible. Which I think makes a lot of sense. So I'm just gonna just reorient everybody, that's kind of our project area. Uh it is within Highland Park Borough, everybody, I just wanna remind you of that fact. No, I'm just joking. It's about a half mile stretch. Uh it's an urban principal arterial, and I'm sure that means something to DOT. Uh and right now, it is a four lane undivided roadway with eleven foot lanes and no shoulders, sidewalks in portions, missing sidewalks. Driveways, et cetera. And their number was thirteen thousand three fifty vehicles a day, although I've seen up to fifteen thousand, so I'm not I can't swear to you when they took this data from. The key needs that they were trying to address were what the ones that the borough brought to them. We had some grave concerns after the loss of the young boy a number of years before, and then actually more recently since this project started, uh the two folks in the, in the vehicle uh last year. Um but the, the issues that they were set forth to address were our concerns about improving pedestrian bicycle safety. Uh what I wasn't really aware of until they put it in this terms. Right now, this roadway has a safety management score of nine out of ten, ten being the worst. So just this road, even according to DOT metrics, is not functioning well. And the two hundred twenty fifteen bicycle segment ranking store is a forty one out of three seventy five, which three seventy five is the best. This is a forty one. Uh and that, another priority is also improving motorist safety by reducing crashes as well. So by DOT standards, this roadway is trouble. Uh in, in addition to all the reasons we all live and breathe every day, and we know how scary it is to try to make moves on that road. So those are the key issues that they were looking at, purposes and goals similarly, we had asked them to look at the road diet. Again, these are kind of DOT-ish stuff, but the purpose being increasing safety for all you, safety for all users. Priority on pedestrians, bicycles, and then motors, of course. But I think it all becomes safer with the road diet.
What is R O W?
Right of way. Uh so of course, that's a DOT thing, like they don't wanna have to deal with right of way issues, which, of which there are several. There's um utility poles, there's driveways in certain spots that they're gonna have to, and there's a summary slide later of some of those spots that they've identified. But clearly, and another thing that they're really looking at are the ADA upgrades. I mean, it's an atrocity to walk along that roadway and many stretches, you're on a asphalt with painted. I mean, it's an atrocity to walk along that roadway and many stretches, you're on a asphalt with a painted sidewalk line. You know, it really doesn't clearly delineate pedestrians in any way. We have schools, we have the temple and the Shiva down the street, so there's a lot of walking uses in this area, so it's really important. So that's a priority and I'll speak to that in a little bit. So this is just a depiction of existing conditions, essentially showing sidewalk curb, two lanes of traffic. Again, now they're kind of referring to Sixth Avenue to, you know, now that's essentially what we've got. Gotta put my glasses back on. So some of the safety issues that they've identified, and this was, I believe, looks like they were focusing on twenty seventeen. Again, I'm not a hundred percent sure it's on my slide. But you know, clearly they've identified sixty eight crashes during this period that they looked at. Two fatalities and with the asterisk, but there were at least two more since they did this work, which were the two we were just referring to. A bicyclist crash as well. Again, ranking number eleven out of two hundred on the project safety management scoring chart that they have. That's what P S M S, I had to Google that before the meeting. And then again, forty one out of three seventy five on this bike segment list. So we've got a dangerous stretch here by their own measurements and we have poor conditional sidewalks, missing sidewalks, you name it. So those are our current conditions. So the proposed preferred preliminary preferred alternative, they refer to that as a P P A. They use this lingo, you'll get used to it because you'll see it in a lot of their materials, is to reduce the travel lanes from four to two with creating a buffered bike lane in either direction. Okay? Upgrades, ADA improvements, including high visibility crosswalks and sidewalk connectivity. What high visibility crosswalk is like extra reflective, as I understand it, which right now we have pretty pale and unhighly visible. I believe they will be coming through in the next couple of weeks to, to upgrade some of that in the interim as kind of, you know, recognizing it doesn't have to wait for this project to happen. Traffic signal upgrades to, you know, M U T C D. Chris, help me. It's the.
It's full uniform transportation.
Something. It's their own standard, but essentially getting it up to, up to design standards. Getting, so basically the traffic signal that exists, I guess, is it at eleven?
I think so.
To go kind of like where we have our crossing guard, as well as there is a blinky pedestrian flasher closer to Lexington, I believe. So those will be upgraded to whatever current standards are, signage and upgrades and all of this will require resurfacing and, and then obviously the concrete curving and, and sidewalk work as well.
Are there opportunities to close the highways?
I will clearly be ready to broach that topic. There are a couple that I'm aware of that they wanna rev out to side streets because they're right like in the middle of everything. So I don't know. I know we succeeded on Woodbridge Avenue, eliminating and or just significantly narrowing aprons to be what's needed, not just default what's there. So I would certainly suggest we advocate if there's an opportunity to do that. I don't know how proactive they are gonna be at negotiating those things with the property owners that are impacted. So that's a a good question. I don't know exactly how that will play out, but I do know they have identified, I think it's in a coming up slide here, they've got a cost benefit ratio of six point seven eight, which is good. I found out that basically means the cost of this project kind of, you know, outweigh or, or, you know, are less, less than the benefits by that magnitude, I guess.
Did they list the benefits?
If it's in a slide, I'll know soon, but, but basically I think the benefit being implementation of the road diet that it basically benefits, meaning it's a safety and all those other things. And the cost I think is, are what really are driving this. This is not a highly expensive project because we're talking about essentially resurfacing and painting lanes. And then I think the concrete and all that other stuff is probably gonna be more troublesome than the rest. So from a DOT standard, we're not doing a roundabout, we're not doing a flyover, we're not buying a bunch of properties to make this happen. It's a pretty straightforward project. There are nine direct utility pole impacts that I assume that means we have sidewalks running into utility poles. We'll have to figure that out. Fourteen temporary easements for driveway reconstruction, not a hundred percent sure what that means, but I think that's what you were getting at, Chris. But there is gonna be some easements required with some of these properties, either during construction or even permanently to make this project work. They don't anticipate any exacerbation or need to deal with stormwater. Obviously, if we think otherwise, we can vote. So this is just, I'm not gonna dwell on this slide. It's hard to read anyway. But this essentially shows the project starting with basically right at coming out of North Sixth with a, they already identified a, add a right turn only marking to North Sixth, which I don't even think is there now, which is currently, you know, would just be something they would wanna sell. I don't wanna even speak to that because I'm not sure, but again, this is just going through their slide of the project area, which is basically what we started out with, straight through to the end, essentially pavement sidewalk improvements along the whole stretch.
Can I ask a question? Yeah, I drive around town all the time, but I could hardly tell you the name of a lot of the roads.
Yeah.
Is Brookhill the one where the ambulance places?
I don't know the answer to that, but the way I'll say is, you know where Glow is? That's where that is. So I don't know the answer. I think that's further down. The one I'm thinking. So, and I can back up just to give, I'm sorry, maybe I should have assumed. So we got sixth, seventh, eighth.
Nine.
Ninth, tenth, eleventh, Highland. This is where eleventh, okay, Highland, Maryland, Marlborough, Washington, Amherst, Lexington, Barnard. This is like real trivia street names. If you could do them in order, I'd be really impressed. Roth, Columbus, and then we pretty much end right before Brookhill, Tara. And that's that meandering border with Edison and Red there. That's following the Millbrook is our dividing line over there.
I know the, the streets by, oh, Mattland's there.
Yeah, exactly. I, I keep saying, that's gotta, like, that's a good, like, if someone wants to do a trivia question at Pino's one night for just like trying on. So, so anyway, that's the, so the project extent, we're just starting it closer to sixth. And then they did present kind of a concept. Again, I think all of this would be subject to discussion of kind of how they would phase it, which basically install on the one side, then, you know, make the improvements to the other side and then lo and behold unveil. I, I don't, I can't really speak confidently this slide. I apologize. Let's see if there's another. So the thing.
Tear everything up at once.
So I think they're gonna phase it. There's also a road improvement project scheduled between New Brunswick and the Touchin', so maybe the timing will work that they don't have to redo anything and just fit into that timetable. That's a different division within DOT. So they did look at a couple, some data, based that they have a lot of modeling capacity between themselves and their, uh, Gennett Fleming, I guess. I don't know who does what between the two. The consultant was presenting. But they basically took northbound and southbound and they took a look at travel times, you know, no build versus build. And just as a general concept, you kind of wanna see travel time to go up because the whole point is we wanna slow things down. So if things take less time, then that tells us we haven't really addressed the speeding issue. So their projections, I'll just walk you through how these slides work and basically they do a summary. This in bold is a summary for those different segments. Okay, those four segments there. They're predicting an increase in travel time from ninety three to one oh five from the fifth Ave to kind of the, to the edge of the project area. Okay?
And that's in seconds.
That's an A. So it should now take you one hour and five minutes. No. No, you're right. Absolutely.
We are making sure you crawl.
You're not, you're gonna be jogging faster. No. Mid peak hour, which I'm not a hundred percent sure what mid peak is defined as, but we're looking at ninety two to one oh five. And then PM peak ninety to one eleven, that's going in the northbound and B is northbound. Southbound, they're looking, that's going toward New Brunswick. Increase from ninety, ninety one to ninety seven AM, ninety three to one oh four, mid, one hundred to one eighteen peak. Again, this is their work, but this is a lot of what these guys do are projections. So they, but they were generally comfortable with this and they made the point, if the speed goes down, then you've got cars driving even faster, which is not exactly the condition we're looking.
But remember, we, we only had two lanes.
We have two lanes, but they're even saying. Yeah, but even still, you know, we wanna see. The other thing they looked at were, I guess, intersection results and delay is in seconds, but what LOS is called level of service. And they rate, I guess, all of their roadways with A to D. A is the best, B, C. And they have their own definitions as what is at, at, what is acceptable level of service for a given road, given its context. I can't speak to what, I can just speak to the fact that right now, based on their analysis, they did not see a degradation of level of service between no build and build in any of their peak mid analyses.
It seems like.
Well. That's because, yeah, so that is their project, you know. Obviously, if you wanna understand that a little more, I'm happy to bring some of those questions back, but I think it's in, I guess, I walked into this meeting just to back up thinking they're gonna say this project, the reason they've been going so slow is they don't believe this project will work. And I had the opposite impression leaving was, I think they wanna do it, they wanna know the towns behind it because they know there'll be.
They need our support to say.
Want the project and they wanna know the, the governing bodies generally supportive of the direction, recognizing the full engineering's not.
They basically want us to give them a resume, say, go ahead and then they'll.
Well, I'll, I'll get to, you'll see the, the timeline thing that they presented. So again, Bs stay Bs. I don't know exactly how to interpret all of this, so again, we'll have, you'll have these slides and can study them and ask, you know, be more thoughtful questions when you have a chance to really digest it. But from their perspective, and I'm sure there are times where we would argue that the level of service isn't great, but what they're saying is the level of service isn't getting much, that much worse according to their own criteria.
Level of service meaning just ease of, ease of mobility.
Yeah, but they take a bunch of, it's a term of, I don't know if you have more familiarity with LOS. It's been a while. It's definitely an annoying thing most of the time of like what they consider, but often it's thrown in your face as to why they can't do something because it's gonna degrade level of service to a point where they just don't think it, it's sustainable. I think what we have to realize, I was thinking about this when I was looking at this again, we have a pinch no matter what, because at some point you get to past sixth and it goes down to the condition. So it's a matter of where you wanna take your hit, you know, and so now we, you know, the pinch is gonna happen. So I, I guess level of, in my mind, I'm thinking, well, maybe that's why. Because you're gonna hit that pinch one way or another. It's a matter of where you hit it.
Is there a time, I mean, I drive there constantly, but I can't remember there being, is there a specific time where there's an extensive bottleneck going south?
My, going south, my only experience, and this is highly anecdotal, I would argue, might be, but it's not that far down Raritan, like into Edison, would be in the mornings, occasionally a garbage truck is in the still doing their pickup and hasn't gotten off rare and causes a little bit of a backup. So I would say that seven thirty to eight thirty time, that's, but that's based on my driving.
South is going towards Edison, right?
It's also backup going the other direction at the end of the day. Very, very hard to get through near second Adelaide, second, first, second.
We'll have public comment in just a moment.
I think she's.
Yeah.
Okay. Council member hell.
So, uh, uh, you said there was a buffered bike lane. What is a buffered?
Oh, let me go back to the slide. That's a good point.
That's a good one, cause I'm really happy about that.
I'll show you one. This is the final depiction, but a buffered bike lane means there's actually a space. It doesn't mean there's a physical buffer. I don't think they proposed like concrete curb, for example, or ballers. I'm not a big fan of the baller just because I think they look terrible after like a week, at least the ones I've seen, but they, basically it's a, in this case, a four foot buffer of this white stripe area in the bottom right quadrant, between that and then a six foot bike lane. So very generous. It's a very generous bike lane. And that was here. I'll show you on the bigger one.
Well, that's the one I would like to see.
But that, in our picture, we had, I think, put some ballers there. I think that's the kind of thing, I think it has some challenges for maintenance and especially in the winter months. So, but that's the kind of thing where I don't think we have to be endorsing with ballers, without ballers now. I think what we're talking about are a buffered bike lane and how we buffer that, maybe is something we can talk with them about.
But the four foot buffer, you don't really need sanctions.
You don't because it's, it's, and then the bike lane itself is pretty generous. So you're talking at a nice ten foot with, they're basically almost the entire lane.
One of the car lanes, basically.
Yeah.
Then my second question is, you have two lanes in the middle, right?
Yeah.
Are, are, is left turns private?
No, you'll just, just create a little backup. Just go to.
There's no left, there's no center lane?
No, they, I think they ruled that out early on and I don't, that came up in our meeting, but I'd have to get you more information.
That, that, so, so I know we're early in this process. I know that they did a whole bunch of modeling. I don't underst, I, I literally have no idea how with two lanes, there are gonna be people turning left and off.
How do they turn left off rare in between third and fourth? Except for between four and six. They do it.
But it's also, it's, it's, I, it, it feels like it's slower when you're getting there and you can, you can, that you're not going at the same level.
I think you'll find that this would be slower too.
I just, I, I really struggle with the idea of.
I think the challenge with the center lane, turn lane, A, those are sometimes called suicide strips in some towns, so just keep that in mind as a safety thing. But also they are, it will, we wouldn't be able to have as big of a bike lane. We have a certain width and I think that that was so.
Right. So I mean, trade off is a center lane versus having a bike lane on one side versus bike lane on two. I mean, that's a possibility. But then, one, just real quick, and I don't, I know we're, we're early in this process. As you're coming out onto Raritan, you're crossing a bike lane on either end, if, if under this current plan, you're going, you're, you're crossing into traffic on a bike lane. Is there provisions for signage and lights and, and so that.
Well, not yet, but that is, they don't have the designs for that, but there are standards. In fact, we play around with them on our own little mini bike lane on Walter Avenue where you, what do you call that, Chris? Where you do, there's, there's markings so that the driver knows you're not just in a free zone, you're in a, a bike lane. And they will be, they can be painted, there can be signs. Again, this concept doesn't come with pretty pictures. I, I've showed you the extent of the design. So the center line, I just wanna make sure I capture everything, center, center, center aisle, turn, they had some pretty strong rationale, so I'll have to get back to you for some more, more of a technical answer to your question.
Tara had a question.
I just briefly had the same concern that Matt had, but the, the level of service they're talking about, you see them in the traffics, traffic studies in all the planning board applications. And it goes A through B is the degree of, of the wait time and turn done at a traffic intersection. I have the same concerns that Matt has. Now you can, traffic can continue to flow whether it's speeding or not speeding by, by going around the cars making left. The, in downtown, we have the intersections striped so that there's no parking for approximately two car lengths at every intersection. So you can go around the vehicles that are turning left, even the ones that are turning left between four and six. So that, that's why the traffic flows there. What's gonna happen is all of the installations that we put on the side of the road to make it safer, people are gonna use for passing. Because they're going, they're, and that's what we need to look at and see how that's gonna be managed.
Well, that did come up in the meeting, you know, what would prevent aversion, I'm sorry if I'm putting words in your mouth, but I thought I heard you say people would go around using our bike lane.
Correct.
And they did say that will likely happen, but generally cyclists have to keep alert. It's not like we have a curb and that will discourage it, but it will happen.
Tara? My question is, is if we vote to, to go forward, is that saying that we're agreeing to everything that we're seeing now or is that saying we're just agreeing for them to start the engineering thing and we say no if we're not happy with everything later?
I believe this is the start for them to start because I, I don't wanna steal Terry, Terry's thunder, but I think this is start. She's gonna explain more later.
Well, maybe I could finish this line. I wanna get to the timeline a little bit because I think you'll see where we are.
Stephanie, I think once she finishes, then everybody will understand.
I just, I don't even remember all the slides. They also have this mainline queue length, uh, which was, uh, also in what I sent you, which I, is basically. How many feet of backup would there be at these different times of day, no build versus build? The average versus the max, and I think, you know, some of our, I think my perception of this strategy is very different than some of yours, it all depends on when you travel it. Um, but that, they're said the average, they have an average versus the maximum, so. Clearly, we've all experienced maybe a maximum day where we're like really backed up, but that the typical condition at these, you know, in the average. Is less, so you got to keep that in mind as you think about these alternatives, that yes, there may be so, those bad days. Where worst day ever, and it was backed up all the way into Edison, could happen, happens now, the garbage truck breaks down in the middle of the road. So just keep that in mind too, as you think about that, what happens if, you know.
One second, Matt. Stephanie have a question.
I have.
Oh, you do? Okay, I thought I was finishing.
No, I'm gonna let Terry finish before I get Matt's, so you can unpin your pin.
I think you just got to go around the table. So this last, or there's two more slides, and then I promise. But again, this is their visualization of where we are, is this arrow tail end of concept development phase. So their concept development, their concept is elimination of two lanes of traffic in either direction. I will find out if that precludes a center aisle or not, or whatever, turning out, my sense was they had ruled it out, I'll find out. But then, we give them their reso right here, let's say, they've got to get into preliminary engineering, which means all this stuff has to happen. Final design, which all that has to happen, and then they bid it out and do all this stuff, and then a construction project, so what that translates into. Let me just skip that, is this. Basically, graduation from concept development phase, fall of this year, basically, we do our reso, they. Find, wrap things up where we are, and then they start work on developing a scope of work to pick a consultant to do all the engineering. To make that all figure, get figured out. Spring of twenty five, this is what they told me, again, messenger, messenger, preliminary engineering starts, summer of twenty twenty five. Final design starts, fall of twenty twenty six, construction award, fall of twenty seven, so that's really, you're looking at twenty twenty. Let's be real. So this is lightning speed, according to them. Basically, plus, they don't mention the fact that actual construction is the. So, again, from, by, I think they basically, if I'm putting words in their mouth, and I am. I feel they have proof of concept for the road diet, they feel comfortable with what the data is telling them about. Talk, traffic, queuing, level of service, all the things I showed you. And they're asking for an endorsement of council to move forward, uh, to that concept development phase. I mean, I, I mean, the next, sorry, preliminary engineering. So that's.
That's it?
And I can leave the slides up so I can flip around if somebody has a question.
Stephanie?
Um, that, what I was gonna say, maybe we, and everybody at home is gonna kill me for saying this, but. The, we may need to set the lights further from like south, I mean, like first, all the way up, maybe. The timing on them to maybe slow the traffic from like. You know, I don't know how, what, what is it, like fifteen seconds?
I believe there was something in here that speaks to signalization and. I'm, I think you, I think that is part of what they will have to do.
No, I, I think that's part of the conversation.
But that's a good point, I think they will have to look at the whole stretch, especially if they're getting immediate, as you're going more. Especially because you're going to be letting it through, and so, uh, that's a good point.
And then, um, like Edison, right, how will kind, like they just receive notice, or they don't have to be.
We had, we had had a conversation, Terry and I had met with Edison to have a conversation about this project.
That's right.
Yeah, we met with the mayor and we talked about, you know, let's work together to get this, that we're in sync. When you're a piece, so we're not disjointed, so we can get it going at the same time, and he had agreed, but I guess we need to serve it back with him and.
The impression I got from that and some old memory was, they were almost like, how did you get them to do that? You know what I mean? It would be wonderful to have the lanes continuing to Edison, but we know a lot of people do commute that way.
But they don't have.
That's why we're saying, like, we both have the same problem, let's face the problem together.
We talked about too close at that meeting as well, because that kind of.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, that was it. Okay, that's a good point.
Yeah, so I have a couple of thoughts, this is in my neighborhood, so it's kind of like near to me. First off, I'm curious, I mean, I, I gotta assume that the, um, studies that they did. To determine like the amount of time, um, that traffic would flow, and the, the minuscule increase that they would see sort of factored in. Or also like the kind of like backups would factor in the loss of the separate lanes that people that are making left turns, but it'd be good if we could confirm.
I will, I believe so, but it's a good point, we should know that you was, I mean, I can't imagine a lot during that, but like, yeah. Loss of turn or of, of bypass lane.
This would be a part of our discussion Thursday.
Just a few disposable bicyclists, that's all we'll take to worry about.
Also, I was curious, was there any?
There's nothing protecting them now.
Just curious, was there a discussion, um, or mention of, uh, changing the speed limit on that strip?
I don't recall, I, I, we didn't lower it recently.
But when I, because I, I wanted to see lower even more, but.
But if we don't do, my, my response, Terry, would be, if we don't have the road diet or something in place. You could make it twenty miles an hour and won't matter. I, it might be a de facto speed limit if we do our job well and it slows.
If the road diet goes in place, you only have two lanes now, one in each direction, so you're gonna, it's gonna slow it down. I had, I had argued for twenty five.
We don't have twenty five even in downtown.
At least they should be consistent, but that's a good question.
Because I said to them that Hoboken, which is so busy in Jersey City, have twenty five, we want twenty five.
And they were safe roads.
Um, next, I'm the, uh, the bike buffers, I'm curious, so I, I understand right now, it's just basically we're going to paint over it, but I, I wonder if like. Maybe they'd be even willing to provide funding, like if we could get some kind of media there instead to like provide added safety. But then also, like, you could put, um, like some dirt in there and some plants, not high plants, we don't block traffic, but something, and that could. Uh, like help with stormwater.
Where would you put the media in?
Uh, where the buffer is, so the buffer would be like a little strip.
It would be a dirt strip. I mean, it'll be a nightmare, because it'll be too skinny to put anything real in it. But you're talking about.
Or, or just a concrete curb, just something for like some added protection, so like really, just like, because again, like we have businesses there, we're talking about maybe having some more housing there. We talked about the schools and temples.
No, I think it's a fair point, but I don't think that's what.
Yeah, Dairy Delux, like I've been like, you know, I take my kids there, and there's plenty of other families there, um, and there's cars just whizzing by, and it's just like, it. Makes it a kind of, a little bit of a tense scenario, but. Anything we could do to just make it feel safer and safer and more.
Something more of a, of a barrier as opposed to just a paint.
Yeah, and maybe that's something for just later down the road, like.
I have my pictures that I did in California, I'll bring it with me, and so I can say, this is the kind of idea we're looking for.
So protected bike lane as opposed.
Cause I took a lot of pictures of how people do it in, in main travel area downtown LA, and it works.
And now I'm sure that would make their costs go up a little bit, so we'll have to see what they.
They're making a split for a million years.
No, but if they don't do it now, will they ever do it, right?
Ask for the sky, you know.
Lucky we got to this phase, it took us three years to get to this phase.
And then also, just because it takes so long, is there anything that we could do to ask for some like kind of interim relief, it's just like some minor painting?
To mention that.
Yeah, maybe for like, but I know once you get a little further out, then it gets a little bit more just like regular highway, but like closer to the heart of town. Well, kind of like how we have on Sixth and Seventh right now, where it's, there's just the lines that kind of limited to one lane. We could do that maybe eight through eleventh, or a little bit past, like sooner rather than, you know.
That was a part of the conversation, remember?
Doesn't feel like that's how they roll, but you don't know if you don't ask.
I mean, that, that might actually help the transition, if people see it, transition out before it's.
I don't know, maybe we just wouldn't have the bike lane yet.
Pinch up a little sooner.
To pinch closer to six.
And boy, do we need to replace some of those curves, like, and I don't know.
When you guys have a chance, you should just like really go look at the slides that were sent out today and just like make a lot of notes, especially if you can do it sooner the better. Cause we have that meeting on Thursday.
And it's not our last bite at it, but it's.
No, but we're meeting with, as much as we can.
I don't know if this, this level of detail will be answerable at that meeting, we don't know who exactly is coming from DOT, because, you know, as a.
You know what I mean, they know what we're thinking, what's.
We can definitely raise those, like, especially if we're being asked to endorse, you know, are, how, how much are we. How much flexibility is it to address things like the center lane or your protected bike lane or what have.
And then the only other comment I had was like, I'm just curious, in case if they decide that somewhere along the process, they're doing a studying, like the bicycle lane isn't exactly feasible. Are there other alternatives that we could do to fill that space and block off traffic that would be considered?
I think they think it's feasible. Like the bike lanes fit, they work, so I think it's matter how they do it, as opposed to if they were feasible. I think we're out of feasibility mode, and they're basically saying, we like this option, which is the easy option, which is striping. And we're saying, we have some questions, but I don't think they're suggesting, I kind of thought they were gonna come in with like, I don't know, I don't know. They really didn't put that on the table.
That's great, yeah, because what I can tell from their, like, transportation, like, analysis of this, is that basically it's a no brainer, because the. The safety risks are just like so high. In terms of implementing, but then also in terms of the traffic problems that need to arise, that is like almost nominal. That is just.
And some people who are using it as a throughway may find other ways to come, get through, cut through, you may go the one if it gets too annoying and you're just trying to get.
Yeah, because it's just an easy shortcut to go through town, they might stick the route one.
Last one, because, because the other, I, I have to turn off those, like, the weird angle at which the north side streets hit twenty seven over there. Um, now that there's going to be sort of this additional, uh, like buffer zone between the bike lane and the buffer, um, is there. Any considerations maybe like, kind of like tweaking like the angling of that, so that.
I mean, I'm sure that's something the engineering would look at, if there's way to optimize, the challenge is if it. Property ownership and all those other things, depending on how much right away, how much is in the right away versus not, but keep in mind now, you have a. Between the bike lane and everything else, as a motorist, if you're careful and do what you're supposed to, you can ease out. And look, before you, right now, you're like, next thing you know, there's a car coming, you know, so. There's still going to be safety considerations for cyclists, so we'll have to make sure that the signage is clear.
I definitely support moving this, you know, past the conceptual.
No, Matt had, Matt had stick up in.
No, Matt Hirsch and Matt Hale both had their hands up before me. If, I mean, I'll go if he's. My only comment is, I drive twenty seven into Raway almost daily. And I don't see it being any different than Matuchin, and it really doesn't take me that much longer to get through. Matuchin, and there's a lot of traffic, and there's more traffic in Matuchin than in Highland Park, and I'm at rush hour. Going to Raway and then rush hour coming back to Highland Park, so, and if it saves more lives. I think it's, only makes sense, is my comment, so.
No, I agree, I think that whole stretch of, right, from, from, like, the Parkway. All the way to River Road, the, the, right, the hotspots are Plainfield Avenue, the Bottom Neck and Matuchin, Parsons Road, yeah, it's not.
It's not that bad.
It's annoying.
One to go through there because it's, it takes me less time. And today I didn't, and I wound up being late.
Uh, uh, I, I want to share the concern though with the, uh, with, with, with center turn access, and I would just maybe, maybe we should, maybe, you know. I think living, so Livingston Avenue, it was a county project, but Livingston Avenue Brunswick, from North Brunswick to, to right downtown, uh. It's not, it ain't, it ain't pretty, but I think they did a really good job, um, there's pretty extensive bollard system and crosswalks, and there's. Turn lanes and signaled lanes, and so they went from four lanes to two, um, the whole stretch, and it seems to, and there's. Synagogues and schools.
I think it might be a wider, a wider roadway, but. I think they had more room to play with.
I think you're right, but I think a lot of the issues that we're discussing, maybe, maybe there's some, some things.
I mean, some of them, maybe if we have more of a protected line, line.
I don't know the way.
At least address the safety concerns for the cyclists, it won't mean people aren't going to get frustrated waiting. Um, but, but maybe they have data that speaks to the turning patterns, how much time people spend going.
We can, we can look into that one too.
I make a left in Matuchin every day and just wait, I don't have difficulty at all. Cause I don't like turning at the light, so I turn at one of the side streets and I never wait long.
In a way, you're competing with less traffic, because two lanes going, either way, you have to watch out for the other lane.
So you can go, you can.
And a lot of times, when I'm waiting to turn, somebody coming the other way will say, go and let me go. So.
And if, if cars aren't going as fast, hopefully there's opportunities for less.
One more thing?
No, um, uh, and then just, um, uh. I think what, I, I know we're, I know we're ahead of ourselves, and, and, and you pointed this out after the question. As far as landscaping and other treatments that kind of slow down traffic and make pedestrians feel safer, more buffered. And you think about what's downtown, obviously there's a parking lane, and there's benches, and there's, you know, garbage, you know, garbage receptacles and things that kind of. Landscaping trees, you know, um, so I know we're not, but we're not there yet.
No, we're not, but those are very. And we'll have to, one of the thoughts I had, thinking of stack was, when we get to the point when they're looking at the sidewalks and having to dig everything up again. Unfortunately, there's relatively limited verge space, you know, on, you know, but there may be some opportunities to put some trees. Or planters, or, you know, just anything that we can do to kind of make it feel safer for pedestrians, and so they feel protected, because right now they. They have some pretty nasty conflicts with cars going across the sidewalks.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
And it would give a, a, a better feel to the area.
Um, I just wanted to make sure I was understanding, can you go to one of the slides with the trap, the delay counts?
Well, and I may not be able to answer. Travel time. Mainline queue length.
So, twenty seventh, eleventh, and Maryville, right now, under the no build, the max is one oh six. And second, it goes to two ninety four.
That's on its worst day.
I know, fifteen to one ninety five, eight to one seventy seven, right, I mean.
Do we care about queue length?
About what?
Queue length.
Queue length?
Is a car twelve feet?
So how many cars are backed up to read the.
No, this is the length, that's not the number of cars. That's not cars. So divided by twelve or something.
Oh, I think it was another one that said travel time.
There was a travel time delay.
Yes, 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 that one.
So. So under this, it's going to go down by a second.
Which one? I can't tell.
Fourteen point five, at twenty seventh and sixth, no build delay is fourteen point five, and it's going to go down to thirteen point five?
Pinch no longer exists anymore.
The pinch is gone.
I guess, I, the one that I saw was the one with the.
As, as in feet, because I didn't make that clear, I admit.
Right.
And if you think of it, maybe the easy way to go is divided by ten for math reasons, because cars are actually a little bigger than that. Um, so you're talking about a ten car or twenty car, think of it that way, you know, as opposed to, um, number of cars.
Right, so, so if it's a twenty car length, right, how does that not make it slower? Right, so, so if it's a twenty car length, right, how does that not make it slower?
But they factor that in. I don't wanna represent their numbers for them, but they.
Like you said, the worst case.
Twenty seventh and sixth, average number of feet. Is seventeen. Versus one seventy four, so that means there's some day where it's a, a nightmare. But then the typical condition is probably what they're trying to say the average is. It doesn't queue up that much, you know, that's what they're trying to say. But they are acknowledging that there are those days where things go wrong and there can be a bad backup, a car gets broken down, you never know. So, um, I guess what.
I guess my, my point is that it struck me that the, that, that, that was a lot, that felt to me like a lot, even though it was in car like that going from one car to twenty car backup. Seems like a lot. And so I, if that, we could unpack that a little bit and try and.
I guess I wish I could have this for lower rare downtown, just to give you some frame of reference, but I'm sure that's like asking a lot, but you know. Just to give some frame of reference, like, oh, that's not that much, you know, if, if that's how it always is and we're just kind of extending it down. A little further. I mean, I think we have a tension between cars moving faster and freely and slowing them down for safety reasons.
We want to slow it down because that has been the historical problem where people get killed or hurt in that area is to slow the traffic down. And you know, we are, that area is ranked out of nine out of ten, we're at nine, so it's a big problem. We need to slow cars down.
So I, I, I think all I was trying to point out is that my original question about entry and exit onto twenty seven, right? With a twenty or thirty car backup onto twenty or twenty second, I think that's gonna be a lot longer coming in onto the, to, to twenty second.
I mean, if you're on a side street.
And you're trying to get onto twenty seven, if you're honest, if, if you're trying to get on. If there's a thirty car backup, it's gonna be a lot longer for you to get on than if there's a two car back.
So your impact on the.
Impact on the neighborhoods coming out, right? I think that's a, that's, those seem to me to be fairly significant impacts for people coming out to twenty seven. And people do that, they have to, that's the only way out for most of them, cause they're not gonna go all the way down to do close or anything like that, so that, that. I think that's an impact that we should.
I mean, it kind of depends on which way you're going and which way, cause sometimes I think it's gonna do like terrorists, they'll stop and let you out.
And also I know for me, like, I live on a road where I don't have a light at the end of my road. So I go over to eleventh and come out there where there's a light, so I can safely cross over, we bridge out. I mean, it doesn't take that, it's a matter of a couple of blocks to get to a road with a light to come out.
One question I had, which I thought someone would have raised, oh, I'm sorry.
Is there a call to us, like police time, anything? Is that gonna be in the?
We did not discuss that.
Any calls to the borough?
I think. For, for them to, for us to give them the go ahead.
Yeah, like what would be the cost of the borough?
For the go ahead? Borough attorney would like to answer their question.
So what ends up happening generally when there are projects with the DOT, there is an agreement and under the statutes, sometimes it's two percent or if they decide on a different agreement. Cause they have, you have to pay.
Yeah, that's what I wrote.
So what is happening, they're gonna have a protective cost and then they'll give you labor cost for it at that, at the time. They can use state troopers too.
They can. So fifty fifty.
So we're looking at, at the contract in twenty twenty seven.
Right, right. Oh, so not even now in the red.
And it's regular by statute, so it could even be, you know, it can be adjusted between the parts as well. But I don't think they're charging us for the improvements.
What, like in general, like, but nothing to the project, okay.
So, but we can find out what those, but I think.
What the percentages would be. Later on down.
So there may be some cost, but we can probably use a capital ordinance to. And there'll be an agreement executed at that time, so you can see it.
More to, more to follow, Jason?
Oh yeah, I was just saying, as someone who has to like navigate that, I'm actually like, like speaking as a constituent in that respect to Matt's point. I would gladly trade, like if I had, if it kind of, although I will say it's kind of tricky to kind of get on that road and I feel like some people sort of avoid making turns. Onto that road now because it is kind of tricky and not like maybe the safest turn in the world. And I know that there's plenty of neighbors, uh, in that exact neighborhood, um, that. Definitely are, you know, looking to see this happen sooner rather than later. I'm sure there may be some that are opposed, but I definitely, I, I can at least vouch, like speaking for myself and. Knowing that there are at least some other residents in town that are like.
As a trade off.
As a trade off, like, cause like, you know, we don't just drive there, we walk there too, so, you know. But you, you know, a bunch of the people that I know, my circle are people with younger kids.
I think locals will find the alternative, you know.
I think so, but what, maybe one possible solution is adding an additional light out in an intersection.
They did not, I think they were very specific about not adding.
That's one of the things that we had, uh, as, as a matter of fact, Senator Dagman had suggested a light, we, cause we discussed a light because. We were saying, do we need another light there? And he had suggested that too, but that's not what the DOT wants to see.
It would be another guaranteed access point.
We could go back and, and, and discuss the possibility.
But I think they're, one of the, again, they're like, well, it's just paint.
Why worry that people are gonna find their way to the nearest signal intersection like, like fifth? There's no left turn lane, you know, there's no left turn signal already, so it does back up there.
And that would be Eighth Avenue would be the logical, because that's like half, like so the first lane. So six, eighth, and then eleven.
Eleven, yes.
Make that turn. Getting to the school than getting out of the school.
But it's, but, but I, I worry that you have no signaled access. Then people are gonna find the closest signal where they're guaranteed to be able to make a safe left turn.
And that's why the light possibilities is, you know, to look and explore that.
I'll go over to, um, where's the one with dairy delight? I'll go over there. And I'll turn out there because I can, because there's a light there and there's a light there, so I have that opportunity.
You gave it, huh? Cause I can see better.
So that is true.
All right, um, anything else on this subject matter? And keep in mind that we are going to Trenton, I'm sorry, to have more conversation.
So this was really, I got.
All your comments are really helpful, so.
Can they give us a, a, a particular room, a conference room or anything?
It's in the Google Calendar. I don't have it off the top and you, you can't find it, just email me out.
Texas. All right, so we're gonna wrap up and then we're gonna move to public discussion.
Wait, wait, you gotta come to the mic, but I gotta. Were you still finishing up or we're right?
I said, are, are we, are we, no, I think we're finished. We're gonna move to public, there's no formal action, we'll be taking, uh, now it's time for public discussion session, a total of twenty one minutes is a lot. Is a lot, it's three minutes maximum per speaker. Comment from, comment from member of the public attended in person will be heard first, followed by those participating on Zoom. You're interested in speaking, please raise your hand on a microphone and express your name.
Hold on one second.
And then I'm gonna ask you to tell us your name.
Laura Krieger, nineteen North Sixth Avenue. I'm gonna start from where we ended. I'll go backwards. Um, I just wanna point out that if any of you have been in New York City. There are lots of avenues there that have bike lanes and barriers. And the parking, so the bike lane, the barrier, parking, and there's a cut in the, in the barrier. The turns, and I didn't hear that in the presentation at all, so that they will kill with the bike riders. Also, bike riders have to follow the rules too, and a lot of times they just don't, and that's a problem. Um, Upper Raritan Development, that's remarkable, if you can get that done. I also think that you should have commercial up there because that can bring people up there, otherwise nobody's gonna be up there. They'll go home and that'll be it. Um, but we do have an enormous number of empty storefronts. And we have a lot of things that need to be fixed. Um, I don't know where this eight, ten is. If I was living down there and I was in a single family home, I wouldn't be thrilled with the idea of an apartment there, apartment building. We already have the, um, the girls, uh, yeshiva down there and, uh. That's up to you. Traxi, I just had a recommendation. When you tell the public that you're having this meeting, cause I know I've been at these meetings and I've seen people get really hysterical. Um, must tell in, with, however you're gonna advertise it again, that. You haven't voted on something, but that this, is this gonna be a real plan for that property? And how that is gonna relate to the new, uh, which I don't quite understand how to do that, the new. Uh, farmer's market, which I think is not a big enough space, but that's my own opinion. But so that they don't go to this meeting, I do remember the meeting that was in the community center, people were just really upset. They, they didn't see the reason to be there or anything if. So if there's a concept that the developer is bringing, the developer should really present it and then get it. When we did, we did the library way, way back. The architects had something called a charrette, where people just came, uh, people who worked there first and then people. Came and, and did that, um, and gave their input on what the design was, and they took notes. Um, the, um, Sixth Avenue, I live on Sixth Avenue. I don't understand how you're putting bike lane, you're going into. Raritan from there. I think somebody's gonna get killed. Oh, my time is up.
Let's see, anybody at home wanna speak to me to raise your hand, just for the record, we have, uh, two attendees on Zoom. I don't see any hands up here.
Okay, that concludes our public discussion. Um, just wanna, um, answer some of the questions that was raised about, uh. The charrette, we are doing the charrette at the high school on June fifth, that's what it's about, that's why we, previously in our conversation, we talked about. Each council member being at a station where the displays are gonna be and with sticky pads and, you know, notepads to. Address questions as they come up, but not only address questions that the public may have, but to take comments as well. So, uh, lesson learned from when we did it the last time at the community center, we know we need a bigger space, we know we need, uh, workstations. Um, the, the developer, the potential developer is coming and they're gonna do a presentation, they'll be there to. Answer questions and we'll have real pictures, so people can be clear.
So the one thing I wanna mention that, you know, just to be clear, there's approvals still needed, we talked about that already. But there is a redevelopment plan that envisioned some of this that we all worked on and went through a public process, so this isn't just. Out of the blue, uh, a plan that we're bringing to the community, so.
And we're gonna lead with that first. We have a whole like ten minute thing where we're gonna lead with first. Um, may I have a motion to clo- to adjourn the meeting? Okay, all in favor?
See you guys next council meeting.